We now turn to item 15. This is an ordinance of the city of Pasadena adding Chapter 6.09 to Title VI of the Pasadena Code requiring the mandatory spaying and neutering of pit bull and pit bull crossbreed Mr. Madison, would you like to make a statement at this time or would you defer until after the presentation made by our staff?
I think if the staff can make a brief presentation then I might give some comments based on my thinking and research since we were last on this topic.
Thank you very much. We turn then to Director of Public Work, Chauvin Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. The item before you this evening for consideration is a mandatory spay and neuter ordinance for pit bull and pit bull crossbreed dogs. In terms of chronology, on July 8th of 2013, the city council directed the city attorney to prepare a mandatory spay and neuter ordinance for all dogs and cats. This was intended to reduce the population of unwanted and stray animals in our community. On October 7th, 2013, the city council considered introduction of this ordinance but withdrew the item to allow the Pasadena Humane Society time to complete canvassing and directed staff to return with the ordinance in six to nine months. At this meeting, it was also suggested that the Legislative Policy Committee consider advocating for state legislation to allow for dog breed specific regulations. On October 23rd, 2013, the Legislative Policy Committee met and considered existing state laws pertaining to dog breed specific legislation and considered specifically available options to address specific dog breeds, looking at ordinances in other jurisdictions that require owners of identified breeds to spay and neuter dogs to reduce the populations of unwanted animals in their communities. On November 25th, the city council directed the city attorney to prepare a mandatory spay and neuter ordinance for pit bull and pit bull crossbreed dogs, and that is the item before the city council for consideration this evening. The ordinance proposed this evening is consistent with Senate Bill 861, which was enacted in 2005 and is codified in the California Health and Safety Code. Section 122330A of this code provides "Uncontrolled and irresponsible breeding of animals contributes to pet overpopulation, inhumane treatment of animals, mass euthanasia at shelters. This irresponsible breeding also contributes to the production of defective animals that present public safety risks." Section 122331 of the same code allows cities to enact dog breed specific ordinances pertaining only to mandatory spay or neuter programs and breeding requirements, provided that no specific dog breed shall be declared potentially dangerous or vicious. Pasadena statistics from the Pasadena Humane Society who provides our animal services are on the screen before you. They show the animal intake and outcomes for animals in our community. You will see that 15% of the dogs taken into the shelter are pit bulls, 27% of the pit bulls taken in are euthanized, and then 10% of pit bulls are adopted. So the pit bulls in our community compromise or comprise a disproportionately high number of the unwanted dogs in our community. The proposed ordinance this evening would require the mandatory spay or neuter of pit bull dogs over the age of four months with certain exceptions, and those are listed on the screen before you. A veterinarian can certify a dog is having a health reason for not being spayed or neutered, largely due to age or infirmity, dogs that are used by public law enforcement agencies, assistance dogs, or dogs licensed and owned by registered breeders. That concludes my presentation tonight. We do have representatives of the Pasadena Humane Society on hand as well.
We know everyone is anxious to step forward with their views, members of the community and who are interested in this subject, but we turn to Mr. Madison.
Thank you, Mayor. And I know also that Dr. Walsh was part of the Public Safety Committee hearings about the matter, and I don't know if he's here tonight or not. I know that he provided testimony at least one of the Public Health, Public Safety Committee meetings where he talked about the relationship between spay and neuter and the behavior of the dogs, and I don't know if this speaks to that provision in the statute about public safety. But is Dr. Walsh still in the house or not at present? Okay. So I don't think it's any secret that I've been interested in this issue for some time, and I do have to say that I continue to believe, based on the data and the facts that I have seen, that pit bulls are extremely dangerous animals. And the metric that I think is most important is the severity of attacks. You'll read from a lot of the correspondence, I've gotten a lot of emails, a lot of letters, a lot of papers, you'll read a lot about how, oh, all dogs bite, and the frequency of dog bite incidents or dog bites doesn't change when you have legislation and all. But that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the severity of the risk, and year in, year out, it appears, for whatever reason, and I'm not a veterinarian or an animal psychologist, but year in, year out, it appears that pit bulls, which may constitute 4% of the population of dogs in the United States, are responsible for 60%, 70%, 80% of the fatal attacks on people. Last year, there were 31 fatal attacks by dogs. 4% of all dogs are pit bulls, so you'd expect that one of those would have been caused by a pit bull, one out of 31, and in fact, it was 27 out of 31. We have incidents in our community regularly. We had one just recently, and I haven't seen the report on it. I've asked for a more fulsome report, but we had an incident where the, there was a gentleman who was up on the roof of a car, and there was a call to the police for service because there was a pit bull that was trying to attack him. And we've had attacks with bites. We haven't had a fatality that I'm aware of, but we've had a number, we've seen a number of these attacks, and we certainly in the region, we have had fatal attacks by pit bulls. And again, without speaking to the cause, there is undeniably a correlation between this breed, for whatever reason, whether it's the owners or the food that they're fed or whatever it is, there is a connection between these, this breed and severe attacks. Last week, in this chamber, the topic came up when Josh spoke at the podium, and there was an ER physician that was here, and he was here on another issue, and he came up to the lectern and he said, you know, "I'm here on another issue, but I hear you talking about pit bulls. Let me just tell you, you work in an ER, you will never, ever own a pit bull." And because ER physicians see the severity of the damage that they can do. The way, excuse me, you'll have your chance to talk, sir. We're going to have a civil discussion here, okay? You're darn right. That's the right that I get because I was elected by my community to do this. You'll have your chance. And he said, and these physicians, because I've talked to other physicians, they'll say not only will an ER physician not ever own a pit bull, he won't ever be near one, and he won't let his kids go visit a home where there is one. It's just undeniable that there is a correlation there, and I hope and pray that we do not have those kinds of fatal or severe attacks in Pasadena, and I do think it's incumbent on us to take some action. Now, I am told that under the state legislation that we're pretty much limited to taking an action based on overpopulation, not on the inherent dangerlessness of this particular breed, which again, I believe is just undeniable. And so I did ask for this data, and if we could show page five of the presentation, the data about the number of pit bulls, and this is, you know, I know a number of the people that are here are pit bull lovers, dog lovers, I've owned dogs all my life, I love dogs too. This is the real tragedy, is that we are euthanizing almost three times the number of pit bulls than we are any other breed. And I don't know if we have a number, Chauvin, for what that, like what the actual real number is that we're putting down of these pit bulls that are bred, found, and then not adopted, can't be adopted? Do we know the real number?
Let me look while we're talking.
So clearly, on this record, there is good cause for us to require, not the banning of pit bulls, we could debate that, you know, some other time and place, but under state law, we can require that pit bulls merely be spayed and neutered. And Dr. Walsh's testimony was that that would help the overall safety and health of the dogs, and it would prevent us from having to spend precious public resources killing what I'm going to guess is hundreds, maybe more, pit bulls every year. And I would think that that would be something that we could all agree on, that we shouldn't be killing these animals. So I would like to know from my colleagues if there would be support for this or whether we should defer this and make it part of a larger discussion about all breeds. I do fear that that's going to lead to what's called flooding, you know, that here we have, there's an acute issue with regard to this one breed that's almost three times the rate of euthanization as any other breed in our humane society. It's very expensive for us, and if we move to spay and neuter of all breeds and spay and neutrers of cats, and then where does it lead? And we get all bollocks stuff in it, and we're not taking any action at all. And I'm telling you, as sure as I sit here, there's going to be a severe attack in Pasadena. And I don't want to be the person that had an opportunity to take some remedial action to prevent that. I don't want what's happened in other communities, it's happened in our region. I don't want to have the parents or grandparents of a two-year-old who got torn to shreds have to come in here and ask us why we didn't do anything. So that's where I'm coming from, Mayor, if it would be helpful for others to give a sense of where they are, maybe we can move things along and not have to debate, you know, the bigger question, because I, my sense is that we may not be able to convince one another about the facts that I've laid out.
Thank you very much. Your comment has led to interest on, to comment on a couple of members of the council. Margaret?
Thank you. And thank you, Steve. I know you've worked very, very hard on this issue from the time I was on the Public Safety Committee with you, but I continue to feel, and based on what I've read and what the Humane Society told us last time we discussed mandatory spay and neuter, that we should continue with the path we set out on in October, which was when we discussed mandatory spay and neuter for all breeds. And at that meeting, we decided to defer that item for, I don't know, six months or so, because the Humane Society was undergoing a canvassing effort through the entire city, going door to door on an education campaign, telling people, reminding them, it's necessary to have your dog licensed, and also educating, I think, about spay and neutering. So at that time, the council decided that we would hold that proposed legislation until such time as the canvassing was complete. So I would, my position is, I would like to set this aside and let the, I don't know, three or four more months go by till the canvassing is complete, and then bring back the mandatory spay and neuter of all breeds.
Over 70, over 70.
Mayor, I would suggest that we move on to, in the absence of any more comments from our colleagues tonight, for now, anyway. I would suggest we move on to public comment, because I know we have a number of cards, and I would actually ask my colleagues, if you're in agreeance, to have a minute per card, because I believe we have over 50 or some.
Almost 70, there are 67, according to.
67 cards, so. I know the public is expecting to speak, and we'll give them out that opportunity, but I think that, you know, this is not the only conversation that we've had about this topic. We, of course, want to give them the opportunity to speak. We have a number of emails and letters that were sent and faxed in prior to tonight, so I would just ask the council to consider a minute per card.
I think that approach is sensible. There are two council members who've asked for the opportunity to speak at this time, and maybe their comments would be relatively brief. John?
Well, Mayor, let me ask the city attorney a question. If I were to move Margaret's recommendation, would it take precedence on, over the action that we are now debating, thereby precluding the need to have, presumably, I don't know this to be true, but the city clerk would know by virtue of pro or con, 67 people speak that are against, as I am, the proposed ordinance? I'm just wondering, is there a way for us to defer that, defer what we're talking about tonight till we get more information from the canvassing? And if that is possible, and I can beg for a second, and it takes precedence over the action that's before us, and that's what the course of action, I would invite my colleagues to vote on, if I could get a second on that. But can you make a ruling, if a motion would take precedence over what we're discussing, where it would have to be considered, if I received a second to the motion? That's my first piece. And then the second piece, if that were to fail, Mayor, I would like to just briefly, probably less than a minute, share some prepared remarks.
Yes.
I don't think we can do that.
Mr., I'm sorry?
I was going to say, I don't think we can really discuss an all-breed spay and neuter tonight. I mean, I think Margaret's suggestion was that we would go back to that path.
I thought that's what he was saying.
I thought it was clear that we would table this for tonight, and we would continue to wait, as we had already directed, as we had already decided, that we would wait until the canvassing was complete. So that would require no further action on the part of the council tonight as far as mandatory spay and neuter, just that this item would be tabled or not acted upon.
And look, I'm not going to press for a vote on a motion if my colleagues express that there aren't five votes for it, and John, I think I'm hearing you say you don't support it. I don't think you need to make a substitute motion or anything.
Well, there is no motion currently.
Well, a motion at all.
The question, given the clarification from the city attorney, can I in fact make the motion, which would be to move the language that Margaret has already spoken, which is to table the issue, because the reason this is important to me, and while everyone in the room needs to not leave early, because I left early that particular day that this was considered, and I thought this was coming back sometime later after we gathered more information. So can you please just provide me a ruling on whether I can move Margaret's, Councilor McAusten's, comment as an actual motion?
The appropriate, from what I understand you'd like to do, the appropriate, excuse me, action would be to move to either table or to continue the first reading to another time, either a date specific or a date that's not specific. And that would have the effect of not doing that and then asking that, in a separate motion perhaps, the city council consider the breed, all breeds, et cetera, if that's what you're asking.
But I understood the question was that if that motion were offered and carried, what effect would that have on the right under the Brown Act of 67 people who are here tonight to speak?
Technically, people have a right to speak to what's on the agenda. If it's continued, then they could speak to matters that are not on the agenda. I think they would take clear direction that it was continued and would not be considered by the city council tonight, and it would be appropriate for their action, for their comments to be considered whenever, if it does ever return. But technically, with something that's on the agenda, people do have a right to speak to it. But if they understand that there was a motion and a second to continue it or to table it, then I think they would understand that it would not be considered.
Mayor, if I may, so I do think that having a fuller discussion about the non-breed specific, in other words, all breed, would be informative, not just, will be helpful not just to the council, but I think to the community. So would we be tabling this breed-specific legislation and then bringing back a second proposal so that the council could take action on either or?
Certainly. You would be tabling this ordinance, which is breed-specific, and at a future meeting, you can consider all breeds, breed-specific, no breeds. You could agendize that to consider all the potentials and make a decision at that point based on whatever recommendations are considered.
So I'd be prepared to support a motion that directs staff to come back with a, with options for the council to act on. One, obviously, this one that would be tabled, but then also the one that would cover all breeds for mandatory spay and neuter.
Well, the one that would cover all breeds has already been developed. We just deferred it until the completion of the canvassing, so that will come back in due course. It's my understanding that that's already in the future agenda to come forward. So as far as I see it, no action needs to be taken on that point. That's why the only recommendation I was making really was that we table this.
Well, but.
But it sounds like we should continue it.
I think the action would be to continue it and then come back with both, so that the council would have, come back with both at the same time. I was not a part of that discussion, I was absent for that meeting. What was the rationale?
Well, the rationale.
For holding off until the, until the canvassing was completed?
Part of it was that it was coming too quickly on the heels of the canvassing, that it was just a lot of, kind of, a lot of government, a lot of activity and actions for pet owners coming very quickly, and that the canvassing effect could be very helpful in terms of education, and we should give people time to do that, license their dogs, and sort of complete that before we enact additional legislation on top of it, that it was a little bit of a double whammy.
I think part of it was also the canvassing would allow us to see what types of breeds are found during the canvassing as well.
But if the proposal was mandatory spay and neuter for all breeds, I mean, I don't understand how canvassing would help, identifying what kind of dogs are in our community would inform or lead to a better informed decision. I mean, am I correct that other cities, like the city of Los Angeles, have mandatory spay and neuter for all breeds?
Right, right. It's fairly common.
Yeah, and so I, again, I don't see, well, I won't second-guess why that decision was made, because I wasn't here, but I would support tabling the discussion on this legislation and coming back with, or continuing, I should say, and coming back with a more complete recommendation that includes all breeds, not just this breed.
Mayor, do we have a date?
As we're proceeding, there are others waiting to speak.
Well, I have not yielded the floor, because in my first comments, I was asking for a ruling from the city attorney on how to proceed, and then I subsequently had said that I wanted to share my prepared comments. What I'm prepared to do now, shockingly, if it's appropriate, is to ask for a second to vote this proposed ordinance down completely tonight, and then we will not have to indulge 67 or whatever the number of speakers to do the same. I'm convinced this is not the right way to approach this issue. We as a council, we as, excuse me, we as a council gave away a pathway forward on this issue, so if it is appropriate, Mayor and city attorney, I would simply make a motion that we vote this proposed ordinance down.
And actually, if you do that, you would need to hear from the public before you actually vote.
So not to, not to play.
Unless they don't want to speak, but they, you would have to hear from them.
I think you, I think you could, if it in fact, the, if I were to receive a second on that motion, and the motion were to pass, we would obviously, I mean.
Before they vote.
Before we voted, we would give the public the opportunity to speak on the issue. However, I'm of the feeling that the council, the majority of the council is not prepared to support this ordinance.
I was going to say that Mr. Madison, who's played such a role in bringing this to this point, has signaled very clearly that he's prepared to take into account the views of council members in regard to what we might attempt to do and what we might express the intention to do in the future with respect to mandatory spay and neuter. Maybe you're already there in light of what various council members have said, but there are two council members who haven't spoken yet.
Just may I, a point of order, if I could, Gina and Jackie, do you mind if I just ask one or two questions?
No, go ahead.
Do we have a date for the all-breed ordinance to come back or the?
I'm informed that the survey in question, the canvassing that was deemed at the time that it was first mentioned to us worthy of conducting and completing before we got to the action on the ordinance, will be done in June.
So I don't, I'm not familiar with the procedure that John is describing, where we vote something down. If no one is moving the ordinance, then normally it wouldn't be called to question, and we could be here a long time if we voted down all the things that we don't want to do. I like Victor's idea of continuing this to that date, because I think the community should get an opportunity to be heard. I mean, I want to hear what every one of these people has to say. You know, we're here to represent the community and to have open minds and hear the facts. But I think we, if where we're leaning is to doing broader ordinance, then we should continue this to that date and hear it all at that time. I just also wanted to ask Chauvin if we had a number on the number of pit bulls that was, were euthanized.
I'm sorry. The, I have the numbers on the number of pit bulls that were taken in, the aggregate numbers. So in 2011, the Humane Society collected 4,420 animal, or dogs overall, 674 were pit bulls, so that's about 15%. And in 2012, the Humane Society collected almost 4,200 animals, dogs, and 595 of those were pit bulls, so that's 14%.
So if you look at the adoption figures, then, of 10%, and I don't know what year, this chart doesn't have a year on it, but if you just apply that number to the numbers that you just described, that means just in those two years, over 1,000 pit bulls were put down. Yep, that is what it means. Is that right?
No, I think, hold on, I'm trying to do the math.
So help us understand what I'm trying, the question I asked, Chauvin, was how many pit bulls are euthanized?
Okay, we took in, the Humane Society took in 674 pit bulls in 2011, so if we euthanized 27% of those, that would be.
But I don't think that's the number either. If you look at 27, that's the percent of the total dogs that were euthanized.
I do have Elizabeth Campo from the Humane Society in the audience. Oh, I thought she was.
I mean, you made the same mistake I did. You applied the number to the total, and I don't think either of us was right, but we should know the answer to that question.
Mayor, you know, I, given these numbers, I mean, I didn't realize, in, in Mayor, you know, given these numbers, I mean, I didn't realize in previous discussions with the Humane Society, the euthanasia rate that I understood was much lower than this. And so, you know, if, I mean, mandatory spay neuter is one tool to keep the population down in order to prevent euthanasia, needless euthanasia of animals. And so when this matter comes back, I would like a report from the Humane Society on what the actual euthanasia rates are and what we can do, not just, not just for pit bulls, but for other animals and what we can do to, what we can do to lower these numbers because these are pretty high numbers.
I mean, if we, I want an answer to the question tonight, though, about, because I asked before the meeting for this information. And I mean, if they could just tell us how many animals are euthanized total, how many dogs, then we could figure out the percentages.
Twenty-seven percent. Jean, you've been patiently waiting. I appreciate that as the council wrestles with this complicated issue.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I just want my colleagues to know that last week, I asked in a written form for this item to be deferred. It wasn't accepted because of, it was a council motion that brought it to the first reading, if I understand that, that ruling to have it tonight. I have some comments, Mayor. Just like Mr. Kennedy has his comments, I don't know if it's appropriate, but I just want the audience to know that I am just so grateful for all the comments. I mean, if you see the size of the staff report just for this one topic, I'd never seen anything so thick from emails. So thank you for that. I don't believe in banning pit bulls or the mixed breeds. I have to admit that I have some mixed emotions about this ordinance to single out pit bulls and the mixed breeds. But as a council, I know that we care about public safety, and I think all of you do as well. And then do we have the state law to deal with that prohibits having local jurisdictions have breed, to single out certain breeds? And I don't agree with that. No, what I agree with is that we shouldn't go against that state law. Then I have another question that I had from all of you. Is this law fair, that what we're trying to do here, having a pit bull ordinance? I don't believe it is. And the last thing I want to say is that I don't, I don't support having a pit bull ordinance right now. I think that we should have the other ordinance come forward. And so, Mayor, you did answer a question that I wanted to, I wanted to ask about when the survey was going to be done. So I think that is the ordinance that we should pass, the other ordinance that all dogs and all, well, dogs and cats, to be equally spayed and neutered, to have a breed-neutral law rather than a specific law. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Jackie, you've been waiting too patiently. Thank you.
Just in brief, I was not prepared to support tonight's agenda item as written or as proposed, similar to my opposition to the earlier action of the city council that even brought this resolution forth for consideration tonight for the same reasons, namely, the difficulty that the Pasadena Humane Society expressed to us in them being able to identify pit bulls and pit, well, not pit bulls, but the pit bull, mixed breeds, and the enforcement mechanisms by which, if passed, the resolution would require. I was more than happy to consider if and when it comes before us, the non-breed-specific mandatory spay neuter. And in fact, do on its face agree with that, but I know that if that comes forward, we will have significant public comment as well. And so although I'm not prepared to support the resolution tonight, I can be supportive of the action to table this discussion until it comes back again in June or thereafter. And I'm not, I can't say that I'm totally clear on whether or not we needed a motion for, to table the discussion, but maybe you can re-clarify that.
Let's turn to the city attorney.
I did not hear that we need a motion explicit to just table it and allow it to come back.
And after we hear from her, I'll turn to Mr. Madison to see if he has any suggestion in light of how the conversation is going.
In the past and tonight, the council has certainly not introduced an ordinance which had the effect of tabling or withdrawing the ordinance from consideration by the council. So a motion is one way to do it. If there is no motion or if there is no one who offers the ordinance tonight for consideration, that would have the same effect and there wouldn't be an ordinance to vote on tonight.
So we can just not have, no council member can, if any council member chooses not to introduce it, then that has the same effect and we don't have to have a motion?
It would drop off and it would not be considered. However, we still have the factor of considering comments from the public, whatever happens. And I did want to clarify a comment made by Mr. Masuda. State law does allow breed-specific spay and neutering by cities. There's a specific health and safety code section, it was referenced in the slide presentation, that does allow it. So I'm not speaking to whether the council does it or not, but it is specifically authorized should the council decide to do that.
Well, just for the record, so that we can preserve all of the information, both from the public and from the staff, staff report perspective, I would ask my colleagues to consider just not introducing the ordinance tonight and, in effect, tabling it until we have the full discussion of the non-breed-specific ordinance in June or as soon thereafter as the canvas is completed.
Mr. Madison, would you want to offer a statement?
Well, I continue to think, given these numbers, and I would love to give an answer to just what the raw numbers are, that we would be wise to take the action tonight on the breed that's almost thirty percent of all of the animals have been euthanized. But I hear that there's not support for that around the dais. So I think it'd be perfectly fine, I think it'd actually be preferable if we could continue this to a date certain, when we also know that we can calendar the other approach and then have everyone here to discuss the merits and the, I remember expense was an issue too, Margaret, when we were talking about the broader ordinance and all. Did we, Chauvin, did we get those numbers?
I don't have them this evening. I can provide them first thing in the morning.
Is the Humane Society not here tonight?
Not at the moment, no.
Well, that's disappointing because for the money that we pay and I ask these questions ahead of the hearing, and if they're not here at this moment, I mean, what moment were they going to be here? You know, so I'm disappointed that they're not here. But I would support a motion to continue to a date certain if the staff was comfortable setting a date.
Mayor, if that's a motion, I would ask, I would second it if we amend it to include the possible action on mandatory spay neuter for all breeds, but also, I understand that to be the intent, but also I'd like to have the Humane Society present a full report on euthanasia of animals at the Humane Society in general, a complete report.
A motion that has been made to continue the ordinance in front of us until, if we can, a time-specific, say, in the month of June, has the effect of tabling the matter for tonight. I think it's a motion to table, although those words weren't used. And that was seconded with the understanding, I think that both the maker and the seconder have, that there would be an opportunity to consider a mandatory spay neuter proposal for the city that would be applicable to all dogs. To the extent that persons want to talk about a breed-specific ban, prohibition at that time, or mandatory requirement at that time, they could. So the question, Mr. Beck, is whether a week in June is consistent with your best information about when the survey will be completed.
The timing works. I'm only a little bit concerned as it relates to the, for weeks in June, as it relates to that budget adoption period, and so we tend to have longer meetings at that time. And I'd want to be sensitive to the crowd that's already sat through a long meeting and hasn't had a chance to speak yet. So if we wanted a date certain, I'd have to suggest, I'd be, it'd be preferable from a perspective of knowing that we're, the budget's already adopted.
Chances are great that the maker and the seconder of the motion would accept a July date.
Mayor, if I could, I just, my comments were that I would, you know, go along with a motion. I would prefer not to be the maker of that motion because I have a view that this is exigent and that we should be acting, so.
It was now made by Mr. Gore, though, unless he prefers only to be a seconder.
No, I'm prepared to make the motion, Mayor.
And it was seconded by the vice mayor.
The first meeting in July is the fourteenth.
First meeting in July is the fourteenth. There are persons who are waiting still to speak. I wanted to give the courtesy to the sponsor of this proposal to offer a direction, but I know that those who are waiting to speak have had strong views as well as to how we should go. John?
Hearing my colleagues speak, it seems to me that there are enough members of the council who would vote this motion, not the motion, but the ordinance down tonight. And I am persuaded by a comment that was whispered to me that we have invited the public to speak, and they have been gracious enough to stay long, to be heard. I'm now of the opinion that the public in a democracy needs to be heard, so I'm moving away from the comment of trying to rush. I would not support the motion that is currently on the floor. I'm more interested, if it comes to it, that the council would take an action on the ordinance that's before us tonight, given the fact that a majority of the council has already spoken and said they are not in support of this ordinance.
The motion is, however, pending before us to, in effect, table. So let's see how that goes. I think there's a request from Mr. Tornig.
Mayor, I agree with what John just said. People have been sitting here for three hours. Whether we vote to table or not, they need to be heard, and so-
I don't disagree with that. That would be the next thing in order.
I think that it would probably be of value before we take, we may ultimately determine it makes sense to table this and combine it, as has been suggested, with a discussion on the alternate proposal. But I think since these people have been sitting here all this time and since we are going to have to hear from them one way or another, that before, before we vote on the motion to table, let's hear what they have to say and then decide whether we want to table it or vote it up or down tonight. We've got a lot of information on this, on this issue. I share Steve's concern that the Humane Society isn't here to answer some pretty basic questions. So that's disappointing, certainly, but I, but I think we should hear, let's, before we take a vote on tabling, I think we should hear from the, we should hear from the public.
My, I'm fine with that, too. I mean, this is why we're paid the big bucks, but the problem with that is if we do all that, and I don't, I still don't know what voting it down means, I think we would just take no action. I can bring it back, and I will. So the time that-
Steve, I'll just offer it so that we get a vote on it.
And I'll bring it back again in July. I mean, so my point, Terry, is the public should be heard when we're actually ready to make a decision.
Well, but I think most of us are ready to make a decision.
You're ready to make a decision tonight. So then it's your intent to move that we adopt a, an all-breed ban tonight because I'll support that. We're not acting. We're not acting then.
We'd be acting on this, look, there have been a whole series of proposals here aimed at solving a problem that I don't think we can solve. And so, at least not through this approach. So I do think that the action that the council took to take up the matter of the all-breed solution or spay and neuter thing, proposal, is a prudent thing to discuss after the canvas has been completed. In the interim, you brought the idea of taking the single breed legislation. That has stirred a tremendous amount of community interest. We've all been bombarded, mostly you, with information and earnest points of view. I think we should close that loop, and I think we should do it tonight.
It won't be closed. They'll all, they'll all come back again when we talk about the breed, the all-breed, because contained within that will be the question whether, because I guarantee you, what the Humane Society is going to come in and talk about is resources and enforcement and all those issues. And it may well be that I will offer this same exact solution-
Well, that's up to you.
You're right. But my point is that a motion to table allows the community to speak when we're actually going to do something, Terry. Because what they're saying is we're not going to do anything. And that's unacceptable.
What I'm saying is that they're here to speak tonight, they've been sitting here patiently, we should hear from them. That's all.
Let's turn to public comment. We have, according to the, pardon? Well, I think that other council members have that view as well, that in light of the hour, in light of the number of persons who wish to speak, that the allocation of time available, at least the guideline, is going to be one minute. And for, there might be some in this pile of cards who choose not to speak in light of the direction of things, but let's, let's see how that goes. I might say that I never had any intention of closing off this meeting without giving each and every person whose card is in front of me the opportunity to speak tonight.
Mayor, point of order, so if people choose to speak this evening and the matter's tabled and it comes back, do they then have the right to speak again when it comes back?
And Mayor, there are members of the public that are in two floors down in the basement. Their cards are green. So what I let them know is that we were going to call five people at a time to give them ample time to come up from the downstairs overflow. So we've given their cards the green color so that we know that they're downstairs.
Good. I appreciate that. Mayor, I'm unclear if, whether as a point of order, we can call the question now, though, or we take the public comment on the question of whether to table?
That's the motion that's pending, and I'm suggesting that that motion will continue to pend until we have public comment and it either.
The motion, or if that was the question?
The question was, what should the members of the public who wish to speak address? Of course, we can't control that.
Right. It's advisable to address the motion. That would be advisable. That would be most helpful if that's what they want to speak to.
Let's see how it goes. The first, the first card is from Emily Van Boemus, and the second one is from Zia Bosnemeyer, and the third one is from Maria Toshur. Please step forward. Please step forward.
Do I get one minute or three minutes, or...
One minute.
Okay. My name is Emily Van Boris. I'm a homeowner in Glendale, which is serviced by the Pasadena Humane Society. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my husband, who is a local pastor, a graduate of Fuller Seminary here in Pasadena. He's a chaplain with the Glendale Police Department and is the leader of the Ariacee Chaplaincy Group, which includes Pasadena's chaplains. I'm also, or we are the owners of two wonderful pit bulls. I'm a pediatric nurse practitioner at UCLA Medical Center. I have two master's degrees in nursing science. Unfortunately, I wish I was able to read my only-one-page statement, but since I'm not going to have time to do that, one of my biggest issues is that I think that this law appears to criminalize poverty. I think, according to CityData.com, 22% of Pasadena residents live below the poverty line. I think compelling low-income pet owners to spay and neuter their pets through a mandatory spay-neuter law does not make them anywhere capable for paying for the surgery. I think to help ensure in public safety, Pasadena should instead take an overall approach to amending its animal code, focus on enforcing responsible pet ownership with its already-existing laws, provide a community-based proactive educational program for its residents, and most importantly, focus on a more low-cost spay-neuter options. Thank you.
Ms. Bosenmeyer?
Hi, I'm Zia Bosenmeyer. I'm a board member of a nonprofit spay-neuter organization, and as I said last time, I'm completely opposed to mandatory spay-neuter of all breeds, and I'm glad that you guys have decided, basically, that blatant discrimination to focus on the pit bulls. Growing up with a mother that has a doctorate in education and having a college degree myself, I know the importance of research, case studies, and citing valid resources. I know that myself and other animal advocates have provided countless research and case studies about the ineffectiveness of mandatory spay-neuter and breed-specific legislation nationwide. My question is, what research or impact studies have you done that will show how it will directly impact the city of Pasadena? What surveys or polls have been conducted to determine the constituent support for this ordinance? If the answer is none, the only responsible response is to table the issue until you've completed these steps. I've submitted a lot of information to you, and the most important one that I think you all should read is the MSN Pasadena PDF, because that discusses all breeds, not just pit bulls.
Thank you. Ms. Toshur?
My name is Marla Tauscher. I'm an animal attorney. I practice specifically in the area of animal shelter and animal control law, which includes dog bites by definition. I want to challenge these numbers, first off, because sitting here, listening to this is insane. The one thing that you haven't taken into consideration is that pit bulls in shelters are not made available for adoption. The only outcome they're offered is death. You have to keep that in mind. Check the policy and actual practices, not the written policy, but the practices of the Humane Society. That's the first thing. Also, you can't claim at this point to be motivated by, you know, reducing the number of pit bull-type dogs, because you're not taking the whole thing into consideration. And thus far, you've only listened to Councilman Madison, who's, who obviously, as an attorney, has to understand that, you know, he's offering expert testimony in the form of this DogsBite.org, but what he's not offering, and he knows, that he's well aware that you have to establish the qualifications of your expert. His expert in this case is an angry woman in Texas who has no qualifications or experience as an expert. She hides behind her keyboard and speeds, just spews hatred and venom and misinformation. I've given you ten articles from the AVMA, the CDC, the American Bar Association, the National Canine Research Council, that have legitimate research in them, and I certainly hope you will avail yourselves of the information. It is crucial. It is incumbent on you to educate yourselves. I've made the material available. Thank you.
This card is from Rachel Vizaraga. I'm sorry. The next speaker would be Sheri Martinez. The next speaker would be Zorika Stancovic. Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Rachel Vizaraga. I'm the Director of Pit Bulls Against Misinformation Organization with over 93,000 supporters, and we oppose the item, the agenda item for breed-specific mandatory spay-neuter. We also oppose mandatory spay-neuter, period. Everyone's provided so much great information already, except for Mr. Madison. My organization fights misinformation, and pretty much everything coming out of your mouth is misinformation.
Would you direct your comments to the council as a whole?
Yes, so I would invite you, just again, encourage you to follow what everyone else says. Please research for yourself, find out the facts, and vote based on facts and not lies.
Ms. Martinez?
My name is Sheri Martinez, and I, too, sit on the board for Pit Bulls Against Misinformation. Mandatory spay-neuter has been proven a failure. I urge everyone to do the research. Mandatory spay-neuter laws have caused kill rates to rise, and we do not have repeat failures of other communities, and we don't need that in this community. And I'd like to see a recall here pretty soon, and also, I don't know where this chart came from, but it would be nice if more information was on your chart with your little made-up numbers and other stuff. So, yeah, I like what you said, or what this sir said, and thank you for your time.
Zorika Stancovic. And then Nicole Casalino?
Hi, I'm Zorika Stancovic, and I'm a homeowner in the city of Glendale. I want to start by congratulating you all on seeking ways to help dog owners of Pasadena get their dogs spayed and neutered. I believe that everyone speaking tonight, either for or against this ordinance, shares common ground. We all want safer communities and more companion pets spayed and neutered. I realize budgets are tight these days, and there are many issues at Pasadena that need city dollars. I believe that it makes sense to look at finding ways to get spay-neuter goals accomplished in a way that doesn't strain city budgets, and working in partnerships with animal welfare agencies seems to make good sense to me, too. Pasadena is a beautiful and special community, ripe with leading innovators and institutions. Tonight, you honored a rocket scientist. The proposed ordinance reflects none of Pasadena's most treasured qualities, and it does not align with the stated values of responsiveness, accountability, excellence, innovation, or diversity and inclusiveness. I question why Pasadena is choosing to follow less visionary municipalities with this proposed ordinance when there are a growing number of progressive communities who are on a different path and who embrace breed-neutral behavior-based animal control laws. The vast majority of people love their dogs, and if support and services are offered, they will accept them.
Thank you. Nicole Casalino, and then Rose Viegas.
Hi, my name is Nicole. I've been a Pasadena resident for 13 years, and I love this city. I oppose this item, and I know you mentioned there are 67 people here wanting to speak, but there are 50 people downstairs, so there are a lot more that are definitely opposing this. And I just want to make you aware that the Humane Society of the U.S., as well as other animal welfare groups, are against breed-specific legislations, starting with, I'm sorry, stating that it's costly, doesn't reduce individuals being harmed by dogs, and merely harms families, dogs, and communities. The American Humane Association, along with the American Veteran Medical Association and other experts, have stated that studies show no particular breed is more dangerous than another, but rather, it is specific situations that create dangerous dogs. After the CDC compiled 20 years of data, they found fatal dog attacks were a small percentage and that it's impossible to calculate bite rates per specific breed. In August 2013, the United States issued an official response stating that they do not support breed-specific legislations. Thank you for listening.
Ms. Viegas, Rose Viegas, then Vicki Radilla, and then Sarah Odette.
I thought there was something. I'll just hold up photos for you real quick, okay? This here is a dog, pit bull-type dog named Cole, search and rescue. This here is Blueberry, certified therapy dog. Blueberry goes into hospice situations and rehab centers. This is Josie, another pit bull-type dog. Josie is a special case. She is a therapy dog. She is a therapy dog, but four years ago, she was rescued from the largest fighting breast in this country, known as the Missouri 500. You want to eliminate a dog that has every reason to hate humans, but yet, it goes into schools with children and allows children that cannot function and read in front of other kids? Those kids are reading to this dog. This, Jeffrey, a therapy dog. Jeffrey was sent to Sandy Hook Elementary School.
Ma'am, you realize your time has expired.
Oh, let me finish with her, with Jeffrey, real quick, if you don't mind. Jeffrey went into Sandy School Elementary School. We all know the tragedy that took place there. This pit bull alone comforted those children. We have a tragedy in Pasadena. We have earthquakes, any type of tragedy. Are you telling me that pit bulls are not qualified to do this type of work? You're wrong. It's all about responsible ownership.
I read the name as Vicki Radilla.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Vicki Radilla. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I'm a nurse of 28 years and a proud pit bull guardian. I think most of us can agree that demonizing groups of any living thing or nonliving object does not stop crime, nor does it provide safety. Also, I think we can agree that it doesn't stop or prevent individual action or intent. There is something fundamentally wrong when our so-called progressive society attempts to design and implement laws based solely on physical appearances and genetic makeup. That is an awfully slippery slope. Moreover, there is no evidence from anywhere in the world that shows that regulating dogs on the basis of breed makes a community safe to live in. Overpopulation simply is a human issue. It is not a specific breed or dog problem. I oppose BSL on any level. Thank you.
Sarah Odette, Oday, and then Sidi Fonteboa.
Hello, and thank you for letting me speak. My name is Sarah Odette, and I wanted to start off by congratulating you on, you and Pasadena, on being rated the second-greatest city in America 2014 by the Advocate. This is a great honor, as it shows the city believes strongly in equality, diversity, and compassion towards all. However, I feel these strides for equality are diminished by the legislation, excuse me, that singles out a dog based specifically at his or her breed or appearance. This is nothing more than bigotry and canine equivalence for racial profiling. I'm excited for the steps Pasadena is taking towards spay-neutering of all dogs and cats. As a volunteer of the No Kill, L.A. Shelter, and Best Friend Shelter, I all know too well how many animals are looking for forever homes, but specifically singling out one particular breed because of misconceptions and hate is not going to solve anything. I would like to introduce my loving fosters, that who have changed my life this past year, all pit bulls. Thank you.
Ms. Fonteboa, if you please, and then Robin Purcell.
Hi, I'm Sidi Fonteboa, and I know very well about discrimination. I am Latina, tattooed. I know that a lot of people do perceive me due to prejudice or judgmental attitudes. And I, I will say this as an animal advocate, a lot of, you will hear a lot of people say that either we rescue them or they rescue us. So, this is a picture of my rescue pit bull, who was confiscated from a dogfighting ring in Downey. His ears were cut off, he was bred and treated maliciously, and he rescued me. He showed me that there's no way that I can look at a dog and judge them by the scars on their face, or on their bodies, or by the way they were treated, that they actually grow because we treat them with love and compassion. So, I just want you to see that there is hope, that we can see things different if we look at people that show us that they are exactly how they are. They're just loving beautiful animals. Thank you.
Ms. Purcell?
Hi, good evening. My name is Robin Purcell, and I'm the COO and Director of Education of Angel City Pit Bulls. We are a pit bull-specific nonprofit, education, advocacy, and rescue group based in the Los Angeles area. Since our inception over three years ago, we have successfully rehomed over 200 dogs, and many of those dogs have come from the Pasadena Humane Society. A program, I'm sorry, let me see, okay. I'm in complete agreement that we need to work together to find solutions to reduce pet overpopulation. With that said, similar breed-specific mandatory spay-and-neuter ordinances like this have been shown to unfairly impact low-income families. As an animal welfare group, we believe that spaying and neutering of all pets is incredibly important, but we must work together to find a solution that does not penalize low-income families. It is possible to work towards a voluntary spay-and-neuter model where Pasadena Humane Society can work alongside local animal groups to bring spay-and-neuter services to low-income families. In closing, I'd like you to investigate a more positive program with a mandatory spay-and-neuter same goal, but without criminalizing anyone. Thank you.
Noreen Ward, and then Jan Reedy, and then Diane Prado.
Ms. Mayor, I'm going to defer my time until July.
Thank you, that's appreciated. Ms. Reedy, Jan Reedy?
Hi, my name's Jan Reedy, and I am right down the freeway from you guys over in Glendale. I'm in your jurisdiction as far as the animal control. I also want to say that I am a foster for Ace of Hearts, and I would love to take any one of you guys to any of the shelters, including San Bernardino, just so that you can see exactly what you're dealing with, where the animals are, especially where the pit bulls are. I feel like I'm discriminated against just because of the breed of my dog by sitting in this room. I feel like it's just judging of appearance, judging of just a specific breed, which is a reflection on me, and I'm a responsible dog owner. I agree with the irresponsible dog owners. Let's educate them, let's do something about them, but to, across the board, suggest that everyone who owns any kind of Staffordshire terrier, American pit bull terrier, any bully breed, is an irresponsible owner is just wrong. I believe in the education of people, and I also do agree that we need to do something as far as getting out into the community to raise awareness of how people are raising their dogs, maybe have special trainings, classes, that type of thing, and I appreciate it, thanks so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Diane Prado, Ms. Prado, and then Dr. Robin Jeffries.
Thank you, good evening, councilmen. First, I'd like to, before I forget, I know that Mr. Josh Liddy handed out a copy of Guilty Toll: Proven Innocent back in December 18th, and I just want to make sure that the council has either watched it, or if not, takes a moment to watch this documentary. Like I said, my name is Diana Prado. I'm a housing rights attorney at a nonprofit located in downtown Los Angeles, in the Skid Row area. I see firsthand the effects of ineffective laws on economically disadvantaged families. In particular, to this ordinance, it is economically not feasible. Even in SB 861, it states significantly that there's going to be a huge impact economically on the county, on the city that's going to be enacting breed-specific ordinances, really breed discriminatory ordinances, because there's nothing specific about any legislation that targets any type of dog. So, economically, it's not feasible, nor has anybody even broached the idea, Councilman Madison, in regards to how you're going to get quarterly reports, statistical report bites, to the state veterinarian. It's not effective whatsoever.
You realize your time has expired.
Oh, my time, so, just lastly, I know that there's going to, there's a motion on the table to, a motion to table this, but I agree with Councilman Kennedy and Councilman Tornick that this should just be voted down. And so, you can keep bringing this motion over and over again, and we will keep coming back, over. back, over and over again. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Robin Jeffries.
Can I have that on? I have, I acknowledge I have something.
Would you step to the microphone and address us at that time?
Sure. May I have the overhead projector on? So I have, I am a public health statistician. I work at UCLA and for the LA County Public Health, and I have done the research. I have sent this report to you guys earlier today. Oh, sorry. Thank you, thank you. There we go. I wanted to point out in my very short time that I have that in conjunction, so the red is mandatory, under, this is from LA County, LA Animal Services data, the red is under basic mandatory spay and neuter. The green is with the assistance of educational programs such as NKLA. The adoption rates for pit bulls, for adoption rates for all dogs increased significantly since the educational programs, and even more so for pit bulls. And the euthanasia rates decreased after these programs came into effect, again statistically significantly better for pit bulls than for other breeds. Education in combination with legislation.
Ilana McAllister, Stephanie Westcott, Josh Liddy, if you please.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I appreciate the time. I'm a Pasadena homeowner for the last 10 years. I am an example of Pasadena. I have a pit bull mix. I have a Chihuahua, and I have a mixed breed. All three were spayed and neutered early on, but I'm an example of a responsible pit bull owner and responsible dog owner, as is everyone here. Our problem isn't going to be with all of us, it's going to be with the people that, regardless of legislature, aren't going to answer to what we need in any case. But I do really want to thank all of you for listening to what everyone said, to reading the things that were sent to you, for making a difference, and for changing your mind on breed-specific ordinances and legislature of any type. I do want to say that someone recommended, and I think it might be interesting to look into an animal commission that is established, so it's not under public safety anymore, but in fact, any animal issues in this, in this city were looked at through them, and maybe they could then, in an objective way, get some information for everyone. And I do caution against any breed-specific legislation, and even, we need to be careful about mandatory spay and neuter because of what it creates. Education is truly the way to make a difference in our community, and I know we all want public, a safe public community. Thank you to all of you tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Westcott.
Good evening, Council. I want to say thank you so much for taking the time to read that pile of emails, and it simply states to the fact that it's not laws, but it's education that makes the difference. You guys took the time to educate, and we out here appreciate that so much, because in fact, this is not just a Pasadena issue. Anytime you have a law such as this that is breed-specific, it affects not just this city, but there's a ripple effect everywhere else, because people adopt from Pasadena, but they also adopt from everywhere else. So if you designed that, for instance, if you could actually overturn the law and have breed-specific banned, then we lose a whole pool of adopters. We also propagate the fear around this, because it is discrimination. No matter how you look at it, it's discrimination against one breed, and if you're a community that's going to discrimination against the size of a dog's head and the broadness of his chest, who are you going to discriminate against next? Thank you.
And Kristy Graham.
Those are just my dogs. Just wanted you guys to see them. Mr. Madison, you started the meeting today holding up a book of Dr. Seuss. His real name's Theodore Geisel. Did you know he had a pit bull growing up? Because he did.
Mr. Liddy, will you address the council's?
Oh, I will. Also, you said no one would step into an ER who owns a pit bull? My mom's been an ER nurse for 34 years. She owns a pit bull. So my point would be, do you notice a trend here with Mr. Madison? Madison latches on to all-encompassing verbiage as if it's fact. First with the "all pit bulls are killer stuff," then with the "all doctors would never own them stuff," and it's certainly his right to do that if he chooses, but he can't legislate from that position at all. And just to close really quick, what we need more of is that our leaders place their moral power behind their laws. And I want to thank, you know, most of you for doing that, especially Mr. Kennedy and Ms. Robinson, and also condolences on your loss, Mr. Kennedy.
Kristy Graham, and then Veronica Ferrantelli.
Hi, thank you for your time. I'd like to quickly address two things. Number one, they say that they're doing this to take care of pet overpopulation. That's great, except that if you're looking at the numbers we'll assume are true for half a minute, the pit bull includes about up to 20 different breeds, depending on who you're talking to, so of course, that number's going to be huge, because you're talking about a huge group of breeds, not one. The second thing I'd like to discuss is safety. This is somehow supposed to make things safer. I just have one question. What do you tell the parents of the two children in the last month in the Los Angeles area that were both attacked by Akitas and ended up in the hospital? Any kind of breed-specific legislation against pit bulls would not have helped, protected, or taken care of those children. And as an owner of a pit bull and a responsible owner of a pit bull, I think all dog owners should be held to the same standard for any reason, whether it's safety or overpopulation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I am a Pasadena homeowner for 14 years. Thank you for letting me come in front of you. I hear you get your information from Riverside. I actually work out in Riverside. I give them three spay-neuters clinics a month. I spay-neuter 100 to 150 dogs a month. What works out in Riverside is they do canvas, and let me tell you a little bit about canvassing. They have 600 licensed animals in one community that they canvass. After they canvassed, they had 6,000. That's a lot of revenue for their area. That meant people were lining up to get spayed and neutered. They were lining up for vaccinations, and they were, and when I do my clinics, they're thankful that I'm there. They're walking up with shoelaces for their dogs, because that's all they have. These people can't afford it. What we have to go after is the irresponsible owners, because most of the owners are low-income, and they can't afford it. So we offer low income to no, to low cost, to no cost, spay-neuters. Thank you. Oh, my time's almost up. I also do not own a pit bull, so I feel that I can really represent the average person on speaking on pit bulls. Thank you.
Susan Campisi, please, and then Eileen Walker, and then Chris Locke.
Hi, my name is Susan Campisi. I'm an Altadena homeowner. I work in Pasadena. I shop in Pasadena. I walk by two pit bulls in Pasadena. I adopted one of my pit bulls from Pasadena. Actually, I found her on the street. I brought her to Pasadena, and they were, they labeled her unadoptable and were going to kill her, so I took her as a last resort. I was terrified when I picked her up. We were both trembling. I got her into my house, and as soon as she felt safe, she was like a little happy puppy dog, and she's been a loyal, loving animal ever since. I want to thank Mr. Madison for his leadership on the 710 tunnel issue. I agree with him. He is on the right side of the community in that issue. He's on the wrong side of the issue with mandatory spay-neuter of pit bulls. I resent the demonization of the breed. I agree with the many other speakers that it doesn't serve the community to be sensationalizing issues around pit bulls. We need better, just, I want to suggest that we take a more enlightened view about animal welfare. We should have animal welfare laws, not animal control laws. This is an opportunity. Thank you.
I'm Eileen Walker. I'm a mom of two, preschool teacher. I actually also don't own a pit bull, but I do work with a dog rescue, which I want to mention, because three years ago, I believed everything that Steve Madison is actually saying, but the difference is that I took the time to actually educate myself and acquaint myself with these dogs. And Steve, I invite you to go into the shelter and look into the eyes of all the dogs you're criminalizing, because it's, it's just, okay, it's discrimination at its worst, but I just wanted to say 27% of pit bulls are euthanized, according to your slide. That's because people demonize them and use fear-mongering to pass laws, which is what's happening here today. And also, your ER physician has one opinion, and there's 67 people here with a different opinion than what that person had to say. And I want to thank you guys for canvassing and educating, because that really is what works. Reaching out to your community will work. I do it myself. People are thankful in providing low-income prices for spay and neuter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Chris Locke, and then Joe Porter, and then Martika Peles.
All right. I'm a Pasadena resident, and I own a pit bull mixed dog. I kind of had the same sentiment about 10 years ago about the breed until, and this was back when I was living in Boston, and a friend of mine that I work with, he ran a rescue organization dealing primarily with pit bull breeds, and he invited me over to his house. He was fostering a dog, and I was a little apprehensive to going over there, but when I went over there, I realized that these dogs are just as loving as every other dog. And that's why I vowed to adopt bully breeds from here on out for the rest of my life, and very happy. She's my best friend, and I'm totally against BSL anyway, so that's all. Thanks.
Joe Porter, and then Martika Peles.
My name is Joe Porter, and I live in Monrovia. Sorry about my voice. I have laryngitis. Couple things. I'm a teacher of middle school, and the biggest thing we talk about is to prevent bullying and certainly don't be prejudiced. We teach kids that all the time, and that's what this breed-specific situation is all about, bullying and being prejudiced. I run a dog and cat rescue. It's called For the Love of Animals Dog and Cat Rescue, and I've been doing this for 15 years. When I go to the humane societies and when I go to the shelters, I fell in love 15 years ago with squishy, lovable, the most endearing dogs you'll ever meet, and those are the Pitties. I am a proud grandmother of three Pitties. I've had one myself. He died two years ago, and he was our best friend and our soulmate. They're wonderful dogs. Please, I invite you, sir, to come to my home, when we have six dogs there for parties, and they have a ball, and they're three pit bulls and one poodle, one Chihuahua, and one mixed breed. Come on over if you're not afraid and see how sweet they are. Thank you.
Mark Rulon.
I think you said it wrong. No, okay. But can I take your chart?
Mark Rulon.
Good evening. Wanted to piggyback on what the attorney had to say as to why so many pit bulls are put down, is these dogs come in as strays. They haven't eaten in days. The shelters decide to signal them out and do what's called a temp test on them. So they put a plate of food in front of them, and if they guard the food, they deem them aggressive. And so they're not adoptable to the general public, which Mr. Madison probably isn't aware of. They make them rescue only. That means a rescue group, a 501(c)(3) has to come in and actually adopt the dog, okay? I'm a retired police officer. I'm a pretty hardened individual. I've been shot at numerous times. I'm a Medal of Valor winner. I've killed a robbery suspect, but the one thing I want to say, Mr. Madison, is thank you for bringing all these people together. I don't really care for too many humans, but all these people love pit bulls. I'm a huge pit bull lover. And in closing, I find it interesting, and I hope the females in here can hear me, rapes are up 25% in Pasadena, and yet we're showing stats on pit bulls? Wrong end of the leash, Mr. Madison.
Rene Sanchez, Rene Sanchez, and Fortuna Power, and then James Kraus. Any of those persons here? Double check. No, this one. Allison Palumbus. I'm sorry, your name, sir?
My name is James Kraus.
Mr. Kraus, please go forward with your statement.
Okay. Hi, my name is James. I'm a dog trainer, and it's my job to educate responsible dog owners. And a lot of these attacks that you hear about on the news and the media and all of that, those are all irresponsible owners. I teach people in classes how to be responsible owners, and we have a saying in the pit bull community, is blame the deed, not the breed. So this is what I live by, basically, and I think that a mandatory spay and neuter for all dogs is the right way to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Fatima Pellez, P-E-L-A-Z. There we go. Welcome.
Good evening. Since you guys are going to prolong it, are the comments going to be taken into consideration when you guys do vote? Before I start? So that when you guys are going to table it, are you guys going to still take our comments into consideration?
They certainly are. They're part of the record, and we have a file of email messages, and we're listening carefully to the comments tonight.
Okay. Well, a little bit of history on pit bulls. Pit bulls were mainly raised to take care of the babies back in the day, and they, even though people mistreat them, they're still resilient and they're still forgiving to the humans. I have two pit bulls that I rescued. They were left on the freeway, and the one that's like more vicious, my Yorkie, because he wants to play around, but they're like more laid back and they just want to be loving. And they've rescued me after I did a tour in Iraq. They have made such an impact. When I came back from Iraq, I was like, I couldn't even stare at you, talk to you, but these dogs, like, they completely changed me. And I know you're going to keep continuing fighting to ban them eventually, but I think you should get some education yourself and really look, stop taking negative feedback from people. Go yourself, like Cesar Millan said.
Ma'am, your time has expired, and so I'd ask that you bring your statement to an early close.
Councilman Madison, please take into consideration that these breeds are not bad. It's just ownership is not, the people that own them don't know how to take care of these dogs, and you shouldn't ban these dogs.
The next cards are from Ana Valverde, Rene Sanchez, Allison Palumbus.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for your patience. My name is Ana Valverde, and I am a volunteer for an animal rescue organization. For, I was 29 when I met my first pit bull. I come from a country where the media has also made it a point to instill fear in the public regarding pit bulls. Funny enough, I majored in journalism, a career I did not choose to pursue for various reasons. They are some of the most soulful animals I have ever met, despite the fact that a lot of them come from broken pasts. It's like they were put on this earth to teach us forgiveness. You know, what is likely to happen if this item is passed? Pit bulls are, pit bull breeds are likely to become exotic and more desirable, which might just promote illegal breeding in less than ideal conditions. Enforcing this law is going to cost thousands of dollars, but education can be free. So I encourage you to also inform yourselves regarding pit bulls. Thank you.
Thank you. Rene Sanchez and Allison Palumbus. Krista Lee Fonseca. Ms. Fonseca.
Hi, I'm Allison Palumbus. As a volunteer at a city kill shelter, I'd like to give you a few ideas. As a volunteer at a city kill shelter, I'd like to give you a few items to consider when interpreting those statistics that you had posted up there. I've spent nearly every weekend for two years at a very high-kill shelter, and I don't think pit bulls are dying in our shelter because people are overbreeding pit bulls. I think they are dying in our shelters because people are overbreeding dogs, period. Small dogs come into our shelters in droves because backyard breeders treat dogs as goods for trade. Small dogs are more likely to be adopted out than pit bulls, that's true, but it's not necessarily because they have better temperaments. It's because insurance companies and landlords discriminate against large dogs like pit bulls. So many people are being told what type of dog they're allowed to own rather than being allowed to own the type of dog that they want. There are simply more homes for small dogs. And pit bulls are more likely to be euthanized in a kill shelter for space than small dogs because of their size. You can put five to six small dogs in a shelter or in a kennel versus one large dog. And if a shelter supervisor needs to free up five kennels, do you think they're going to kill five dogs, or do you think they're going to kill 25 to 30? It has, they can make that decision without considering their temperament.
Krista Lee Fonseca. Mary Sue Wojcik. Marisol Pineda.
Good evening. My name is Marisha Wojcik, and I am a South Pasadena resident, and I'm a member of the South Pasadena Animal Commission, and also proud owner of two rescued pit bulls. I just want to say that it seems that the time would be ripe for Pasadena to consider an animal commission, so that some of these incendiary meetings don't have to occur because an animal commission really will mitigate some of this for you. We found in South Pasadena, in fact, I just wanted to show you, the time has really come for this, because way back in '87, we were dealing with the pit bulls, singling out pit bulls. And I'll just read here. It said, this is from our South Pasadena Animal Commission Minutes of July 6, 1987, "Singling out pit bulls or any other single breed is possibly unenforceable, likely to drive actual offenders underground to pose greater dangers and not addressing the real problem of all dangerous pets in the city." After reviewing the information on recent ordinances, we found...
Ms. Wojcik, you know your time has expired.
Okay, just want to say, the major goal is, they just found that it was ineffective, basically. And also, I just want to say that the CDC and the White House in August of 2013 came out very strongly against breed-specific legislation. Thank you.
Elizabeth Orick. These are persons downstairs. We'll hold these a second. Jill Blackstone. Susan Keithley. Ms. Keithley present? Thank you. And then Dana Keithley.
Good evening, council. Councilman Steve Madison has said that he wants to avoid any serious pit bull incidents before they happen by BSL. Using Mr. Madison's logic, we should eliminate all cars that go too fast and could potentially cause an accident. I have heard doctors say they would never own a swimming pool after treating a child who was drowned. If pits have a hard time getting adopted, which they do, it is because of archaic thinking and fear that Councilman Madison spreads. And listening to him, I would think of McCarthyism. He said he wants to be educated and hear what we say, yet he hardly looks at any of the speakers. I'm sorry, he will never know the love of a pit bull because he will never take the opportunity. And I find him to be a very scary person. Thank you.
This is Dana Keithley?
Yes. Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Dana Keithley, and I'm actually a former shelter employee for the city of Rancho Cucamonga. Let me pose a question to you. When your parents told you to do something, did it make you want to do it? When they said, "Because I said so," did it compel you to want to do it? Or did it make you defiant and resentful? If they explained to you why you should do it, were you more likely to do that? It's no different when things like mandatory spay-neuter laws, requiring people to do something like spay-neuter, especially when those people are singled out from the rest of the population, is not effective. Instead, try actively educating the community and engaging them in a dialogue about it. Find out what, if any, objections they have to it, and find ways to overcome them and work around them. Empower your community to be responsible dog owners, and do not punish those who already are. Thank you.
Elizabeth Orick. Ms. Bleacher, and then Ms. Orick.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you again. I was here in November and remind the council that at that time, the dog bites were only three in the last three years. So this is an ordinance in search of a need. I presented you all with packets from the American Kennel Club with documents on breed-specific legislation and mandatory spay and neuter. I've also provided the city, Mr. Clark, with a PowerPoint presentation from the AKC regarding breed-specific legislation. Rather than taking a negative approach, a much more effective means is to offer education and incentives, obedience training, graduated penalties, enforce leash laws, enforce the need for permanent ID, provide training, socialization, public education, and free trips home for dogs who are IDed. More and more states across the nation, as well as municipalities, have repealed or prohibited breed-specific legislation. Among them are Rhode Island, Connecticut, Nevada, Massachusetts, cities in Arkansas, Kansas, Wisconsin, Mississippi, Missouri, Pennsylvania, et cetera.
You know your time has expired.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We turn now to Elizabeth Orick.
Good evening, council members. My name is Elizabeth Orick, and I'm here on behalf of Best Friends Animal Society. Best Friends opposes any form of breed discriminatory legislation, and that includes breed-specific spay-neuter requirements. Like people, dogs should be judged as individuals. Rather than pass laws that target innocent dogs or their owners, we need breed-neutral dog laws that hold negligent or reckless owners accountable for their animals and for situations that are actually dangerous. Moreover, breed-specific spay-neuter mandates simply don't work. In Kansas City, Missouri, it actually increased euthanasia of pit bull terrier-type dogs. What's more, studies have shown that it's extremely difficult to identify which dogs are in fact pit bull terriers without a DNA test. And shelter workers frequently misidentify these dogs, which will open the door for countless lawsuits against the city. According to a fiscal impact calculator, the cost to Pasadena to implement this kind of ordinance would be over $248,000 per year. You all have copies of that calculation. So Best Friends urges the council not to move this ordinance forward. And I just have to tell you, I just came from the overflow room, and there was a vicious pit bull that was attacking a baby with kisses, and the baby was giggling and giggling and giggling. So if that's an example of the type of dog that we're looking at, we need to reconsider what we consider vicious. Thank you very much.
I have cards from Katrina Layfield, from Anna Luen, from Jolynn Mumcian. Ms. Layfield?
Yeah, good evening. I am an owner of two pit bulls that my family and I adopted from the Pasadena Humane Society. I have to say that these dogs have definitely changed my life. They've changed my view of the dogs. I was terrified of them. I had the basic stigma in my mind as well, but after owning them, they are definitely the most loving, caring animals that I've ever encountered. We also have a little Maltese, he is way more vicious than these pit bulls. Take my word on that. So I just want, you know, to hold a testament that pit bulls are definitely the most loving dogs, and they don't deserve to be discriminated upon.
Thank you. Anna Young?
Hi, my name is Anna Young. I moved to the States to avoid discrimination, to which I was a subject to my entire life. I'm a Jewish person who comes from Russia. I moved to America to not to be discriminated against. The only dog I ever came to love is a pit bull. I'm actually a cat person. Yeah. So let's not discriminate. This is America. Let's not discriminate against specific breeds like Jews or pit bulls, okay? Thank you.
The name on this card is Jolynn Mumcian.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I just want to say, I rescued a four-month-old pit bull puppy from a high-kill shelter in San Bernardino when he was four months old. And now he is a Canine Good Citizen certified and a Canine Good Citizen Advanced certified pit bull. He's the best dog I've ever owned in my whole life. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This card seems to be from Tula Kaker. Casir? Ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Tula Kaker. None of the reputable organization has agreed that breed-specific legislations are effective. Groups like American Bar Association states these sort of restrictions do harm to families, to dogs, to due process, and to the economy. It has been proven breed-specific legislation do not help neither with number of intake at the shelters, nor with the euthanasia, or with the public safety. So what we have been seeing in history has, is history has been repeating itself because there have been other states or cities tried breed-specific legislation, and it has been shown that it didn't work. And we've seen that over and over again. And it is as clear as day with the examples and statistics in front of you and in front of us that what you want to do will not work or will be ineffective. Since we know the past, we can also predict the future. What will happen if this legislation passed? Pasadena will be part of a statistic that shows ineffectiveness of BSL. It will be an...
Ma'am, you realize that your time has expired.
One more sentence. It will be an unsuccessful attempt in its legacy, and your names and signatures will be beneath it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next cards are Sarah Kosinski, Maria Rum, Lisbeth Gonzalez, Nicole Brockman, and Dove.
My name's Sarah Kosinski, and I run a nonprofit called Change of Heart Pit Bull Rescue. I started it in 2009, and since then, I've rescued over 200 pit bulls and placed them in forever homes. I place them in homes of children, with expecting mothers, with EMTs, anything you name it, celebrities, and people who write movies. Between myself and Angel City Pits, from what I've heard, they've also rescued and placed about the same amount of pit bulls. It's a pretty good adoption rate, I do think. I think shelters have a problem adopting out pit bulls because a lot of people do spew false information out, and they talk about things that are not completely true without doing a lot of research. When I started Change of Heart, I did my research. I backed it up. I've been to college, and I learned that you have to have backup. You cannot just say that you've researched something and go off of one specific website. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Rum?
Hello, my name is Maria, and I want to thank you for having me here today. First of all, I want to say that I am a college student, and I go to Cal State LA. And I oppose item number 15 on the agenda because it's ineffective and costly. And I also agree that we have to educate the public regarding this breed and regarding all breeds and all types of animals, instead of discriminating. And I also like to share my story with you. I rescued a pit bull, now four years ago, and that's when I first started rescuing. And she was used as a bait dog. She was practiced on, and she was in terrible condition when I rescued her, covered in scars and bruises. The day I brought her in, until a year afterwards, she was scared to death of everything, even little cats. And now she sleeps with my foster kittens. She's the most amazing thing. And I have to say that within my four and a half years in rescue, I have never been bitten by a pit bull or any other dog, but I have been scratched to death by cats. Yes, cats. I'm not kidding. I've been to the hospital because of cats. Thank you for your time. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes, good evening. I grew up in Huntington Beach, California, and I'm Latina, and I was discriminated, so please don't discriminate my family. Please end BSL. Thank you.
And then Ann Dove.
Hi, my name is Nicole Brockman. I'm a wife, mother, and owner of two rescued pit bulls. And I am in opposition to the proposed city ordinance requiring the mandatory spaying and neuter of pit bull and pit bull cross mixes. I am also the art director of an upscale gallery and boutique in Old Town Pasadena. And during the last year, myself, my coworkers, and the owner of the establishment have had several safety issues. We have received counterfeit money. The gallery has several times been vandalized. We have been sexually harassed, had disturbing and sometimes frightening encounters with schizophrenics and transients, have broken up physical altercations outside of the gallery, and called 911 for passersby with medical and psychiatric issues. However, we have never once been assaulted or feared for our safety in any way because of a pit bull. I have also spoken with some of the other neighboring merchants, as well as the Pasadena guides, who are great at their job, and they have experienced many of the same safety concerns as I. But again, never been victimized or feared for their safety because of a pit bull. In fact, most of them either found it laughable or a grave misuse of taxpayer funds that this is what was being chosen to waste time and resources on when there were so many other actual pressing safety issues. Is that the button?
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Did you say, did you say that you work at the Flower Gallery? That happens to be in my district, and I can't put in a plug, but I would just suggest that people go by and visit that place. And Dove?
Good evening. My name is Ann Dove, and I've been a resident in Pasadena for almost 17 years now and a dog owner for most of that time. I spoke to you in October when the broader mandatory spay-neuter ordinance was before you. And at that time, as has been noted by several council members, it was to be deferred six to nine months, and I'm concerned by rushing this through faster. A lot of the stakeholders who spoke at that time were not paying attention and were expecting this to come later. So I think setting a date would be a good gesture of good faith so that people can be prepared. There are many issues with breed-specific legislation, mandatory spay-neuter. I won't get into the details, but I think the main issue is that there seems to be a mismatch between what the perceived issues are and the range of tools or the narrow tools being presented before you. I would suggest that, you know, people have mentioned the possibility of an animal commission, but in the shorter term, there's an opportunity to maybe convene some kind of a workgroup task force. There's a broad range of resources in Pasadena. You have dog clubs, obedience clubs, kennel clubs, rescue organizations, and very qualified behaviorists and trainers who I'm sure would all be willing to contribute their expertise. Thanks.
Jill Blackstone. Has Ms. Blackstone arrived? Jean Marie Wyszynski? I guess we should hold that. Ruth Seelon?
I volunteer at a very high-kill shelter, Downey Shelter, and I see everyone coming in with their animals and pit bulls, and we have spay-neuter clinics. And it's really up to the people to facilitate the spay-neuter clinics after the dogs leave... And it's really up to the people to facilitate the spay-neuter clinics after the dogs leave on a medical waiver because they don't go through the clinic, and they have to take the responsibility to come back and spay or neuter their animals. It always comes back to the people and not the dogs. I live in Pasadena. I'm very active in Pasadena as an animal advocate, and Jean knows me very well. I have a great pit bull at home, and I support them 150%. I adopted him from East Valley Shelter, and someone said to me that I had a lab pit bull. And I said, "Okay," because I thought that he was just a Labrador, but he's a pit bull. And I am very honored to have the lab pit bull in my life. He's a great dog. And rescue is nonstop. And I think that with Pasadena Humane Society having this new facility, let's use it not just to spay and neuter pit bulls, but to spay and neuter all animals. I don't think that's why they built it, just to spay and neuter pit bulls.
Ma'am, your time has expired.
Okay, let's facilitate our new facility.
Janina Shutter. Anush Gasparian. Danielle Dosher.
My name is Danielle Dosher. I'm a 10-year resident of Pasadena. I currently live in Garfield Heights, and I'm on the Board of Directors for the Garfield Heights Neighborhood Association. I've also been with a rescue called Karma Rescue for the last 10 years. It's a Los Angeles-based nonprofit. We rescue dogs from the high-kill shelters in LA, rehome them, rehabilitate them, and provide community outreach and education. Obviously, I'm against any breed discriminatory legislation ordinance whatsoever. I do believe the city's resources would be better utilized to do community outreach and education like Karma Rescue does. I've actually proposed a new committee in our neighborhood this year for pet safety and education, to do school assemblies, lectures at local libraries, to discuss the importance and benefits of spay-neuter, dog bite prevention, supervising your children all the time with animals, things like that. I believe that we need to have stiffer fines and penalties for reckless and negligent dog owners, and I know my light just went on, but I feel that through outreach programs like these, we can achieve a safer community for our residents and for the animals. Thank you.
Diana Lanis. Addie Daddio.
Hi.
Ms. Perry?
Yeah. So, similar to Eric Slimko, I'm also an employee of JPL. I've been there 19 years. I work on the Saturn mission, and I am a pit bull owner. I love my dog. I came here to discourage you from passing this ordinance, and I thank all of the council members that seem to agree with me. As a data validation specialist for future legislation, I urge you to use sources other than dogsbyte.org because they are riddled with errors, and they would not stand the rigors of scientific review. And then finally, online, as pit bull owners, we also are discriminated against, not just our dogs. So I want you to remember that. Even rocket scientists love their pit bulls.
Ms. Lanis?
Hello. Hi, my name is Diana Lanis. These are my three pit bulls right here, Brownie, Pinky, and Peedy. I've been in pit bull rescue for about, God, 15 years. I have never been bitten by a pit bull, ever. I'm with the other lady. The only one who ever bit me was a cat. And these three pit bulls slept on my bed every single night when I was going through breast cancer. I don't know how I would have gotten through it without them. These are my babies, and please, please don't table this. We're coming back. We will come back.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you so much. My name's Addie Daddio, and I just want to say, gorgeous, smart, sexy, loving, kind, generous, kissable. Sounds like the best date I've ever had, but that is the best companion dog I have ever had in my life. And I would encourage each and every one of you, especially the council member Madison. I would love to invite you to meet my pit bull. She is gorgeous, she's wonderful, she is kind. And I would ask all the council members, why BSL? There are so many things that need our attention, so much that has to happen in the world that we live in. You are a bright, incredible man who knows what he's doing out in the world. I would embrace you and advocate for you to use your BSL for better things. Thank you so very much. Thank you to all of you. Thank you to each and every one of the council members on this side. Smart, sexy, gorgeous. Come to my house.
Marina Backtis, please, and then Thomas Powers.
Hi, my name is Marina Backtis, and I own Paw Boutique, a swanky pet store in Pasadena. I also own Pasadena Canine Cottage, which is a boarding facility, and I also am the founder and president of Mut's and Mom's Dog Rescue. I rescue mixed-breed dogs, pit bulls, and mama dogs, and puppies that have lost their mom. And this pit bull takes care of... She was 32 pounds when I got her. She's 75 now. When I bring in unweaned puppies into the home that have a mom that's been killed, she takes care of them. So it breaks my heart that you would think that she is a horrible dog. And also, I have many customers and four that come to mind specifically that breed their dogs. One have a pair of Labs, one have a pair of Boxers, one have a pair of Italian Mastiffs, and one have a pair of Rhodesian Ridgebacks. All of these dogs have shown aggression to me when they've come into my store. In fact, some of them, I've asked them not to come back. These people are breeding their dogs in Pasadena, selling them for profit. So please, don't allow discrimination, and let everybody, all dogs, be spayed and neutered.
Thank you. Mr. Powers?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Tom Powers. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the American Kennel Club in New York, and I live here in the Los Angeles area. American Kennel Club is opposed to item 15 on your agenda, but I'm not going to take your time tonight to give you the whole argument because it's so eloquently been given here for me by all these people that spoke before me. What I would like to do is offer to the council and your staff and to the city attorney's office the resources that we have available in our government relation department. If you have a problem and you're trying to draft an ordinance, we've been through this very many times, and we'd like to work with you to see if there's something that comes up that's not discriminatory yet solves the problem that you have in Pasadena. I'm not going to wait for you to call our department. I'm going to make sure that they reach out to you tomorrow, and please take... Please take a look at all the written material we've sent you. I understand that this conversation's going to take a little bit of a different twist in July, so be assured I'll be back to see you in July.
Thank you.
But question for the speaker. What's the American Kennel Club's position on mandatory spay-neuter?
We're opposed to mandatory spay-neuter.
Sorry?
We're opposed.
You're opposed to it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Got it? Thank you.
Jonathan Methford. Mr. Methford. Brandon Fouchet.
My name is Brandon Fouchet, and I was going to bring some pictures of the dogs that I have, but I don't think we'd have enough room. Anyway, I've been rehabilitating dogs for over 25 years. I work with all the bully breeds, and I'm here to say that the pit bull is no different than any other dog. The problem is that the pit bull has been one of the most favorite dogs of all the breeds that's come before it. And so, and for the last three decades, for the younger generation, that's been the beautiful choice. And so, I'm available to talk to any council member about what I think the problem is and how to solve that problem. And I've been doing this since I was a kid, and I've worked with thousands of dogs. I have over 50 dogs in my kennel now, and they're all mixed breeds, pit bulls, pure bred dogs, and they're no different than any other dog. So I'm extending my hand and my telephone number to anyone that wants to call and come by and see the kennel or talk to me about aggression. I'm available. Thank you.
We have a card from Dino Menegum, and then from Astrid Oriana, and from Jackie Horick, from Allison Vorringer, from Gregory Pollak.
I've been a business owner here in Pasadena in District 6 for the last 10 years and a homeowner in District 7 for the last 13. I was totally surprised that such a progressive city like Pasadena would ever consider something like breed-specific legislation. I totally support spay-neuter laws for all breeds, but these laws are already in place. Those laws should actually be enforced, but this legislation seems to have another agenda which I absolutely do not support. Please consider abandoning this legislation and work on something more worthwhile that would actually be in the best interest of the families and residents of Pasadena. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison Vorringer. Gregory Pollak. Mr. Pollak?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I went through sort of a similar situation with the city of Los Angeles over the past five years, and I think if you use what happened with that situation here with your situation, you'll find most of your answers have already been brought before the people and have been addressed. It's something to really look at. Thank you.
Janina Shutter. Anush Gasparian. Jonathan Methford. Dino Menegum. Astrid Oriano.
So, I'm here today because I have worked with obedience clubs, rescues, shelters, volunteers, people that work there, just about everything. And I have never found one person who is educated, who believes in mandatory spay and neuter for all breeds or pit bull-type breeds. No one has found that they are more aggressive, more dangerous, more anything, more of a liability. In Alabama, over 50 pit bulls were seized from a dogfighting ring, half died from injuries, and four puppies were put up for adoption. Two of those puppies were planned to go and be adopted by someone who worked in an emergency room nurse. Another one was planned to go and be adopted to a military person who defends our country. And another was planned to go to a civil service worker. They were denied their dogs because someone decided that they were genetically dangerous. This was overturned based on evidence and facts, not on what people thought, but on what people found. They tested genetics, they tested everything over decades, and they found nothing more dangerous than a pit bull terrier. They found nothing dangerous about a pit bull terrier, genetically or otherwise.
May I ask your name?
Allison.
Allison Vorringer. Petrea Burchard-Sandel. Leslie Brog.
Thank you. It's nice to see you all, and thanks for staying and listening to us. Really appreciate it. The National Canine Research Council reports that over a four-day period in 2007, on one day, a Labrador mix attacked an elderly man, sending him to the hospital. News stories of his attack appeared in one article in the local paper. On day two, a mixed-breed dog fatally injured a child. The local paper ran two stories. On day three, a mixed-breed dog attacked a child, sending him to the hospital. One article ran in the local paper. On day four, two pit bulls that broke off their chains attacked a woman trying to protect her small dog. She was hospitalized. Her dog was uninjured. This attack was reported in more than 230 articles in national and international newspapers and on the major cable news networks. We cannot afford to rely on the media for unbiased accuracy. Emotional reactions to hearsay and media hype will not help Pasadena.
Leslie Brog.
Hi, I'm Gianna Lovell, speaking for Leslie Brog. Can I just put this up? No? Okay, thank you. I don't know if it's... Oh, it's getting my smears. I'm sorry. Not helping. Anyway, so I'm speaking for Leslie Brog. I'm with Wags and Walks Organization Rescue. The one thing she wanted me to indicate is that pit bulls used to be nanny dogs. We still consider them as such. We still love them very much. I also work in the emergency room. I am an upper airway specialist, so I do work in the medical field. I also have a pit bull, as per my vet. As per the shelter that I got my pit bull from, she's a pug mix. As per my vet, she's a pit mix. She's a little pit mix. So I don't know how you can discriminate what breed is what if a vet and a shelter and another vet can't come to a consensus if my dog's a pug or a pit mix. So I do consider myself a proud pit bull owner, but I also consider myself a small pug owner, and it's the same dog.
Thank you. That completes the public comment that has been requested this evening. Did you have some cards that...
No, I think we're good. Can I speak? I can leave, sorry.
Hi, thank you for considering me. My name is Jessica.
Did you turn in a card, ma'am?
No, I don't have a card, I'm sorry. We drove late because we were rescuing a pit bull. My name is Jessica.
Would you state your name?
My name is Jessica Johnson, and I'm a dog trainer, and I've been training in Pasadena since about 2005. I'm an AKC Certified Canine Good Citizen evaluator, and there's a couple points that I want to make. First of all, I've owned pets in Pasadena for a long time, and Animal Control has never once done a check on my house to see if our animals are licensed. So if you're planning on, you know, doing this mandatory spay-neutering, how are you going to enforce it? I think fines should probably be heavier for people that are not spaying and neutering, but as far as forcing it, I think you're going to run into some problems without doing more research and education. Now, second of all, education is a huge, huge part of this issue. I've trained classes in Pasadena and also Covina, which is a lower-income area, and people don't even know that you have to vaccinate your animals. They don't know that you need to have a leash and a collar, and they don't know that you need to feed dog food, or they definitely don't know about spaying and neutering. I was having the spay-neuter conversation multiple times a day. So if you're going to enforce an issue that people don't even know about, that's a big problem. So I think education needs to be brought to the people, and needs to be brought in a big way. The NKLA Pet Adoption Center is huge. They have billboards, they have so much public presence, and that's actually helping to decrease the number of homeless animals. They're working in the community, and they're out there on the ground, and I think that's what we need. And I think all the people here are showing you that they're willing to do the work, and they're willing to go to the people and take it to the ground. You just need to give us that opportunity, too. Thank you.
That does complete the public comment, and Mr. Madison has requested an opportunity to address this subject.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank my colleagues, first of all, for, you know, being willing to tackle this issue, and all of the speakers. I do have some questions, and I want to start by asking if we got any data from the Humane Society.
Yes, we did. In calendar year 2012, 4,198 dogs were taken into the shelter, 676 dogs were humanely euthanized. That's about a 16% rate. And then 27% of those dogs, on average, are pit bull, which equates to about 183 pit bull dogs euthanized in 2012. Of those dogs euthanized, 51.4% had serious medical issues, were underage or under- Of those dogs euthanized, 51.4% had serious medical issues, were underage or underweight. 45.2% of those euthanized had behavior issues such as extreme aggression or fear, and 3.4% of those animals had no placement opportunities.
Thank you. So, you know, 183 in one year, over years, you know, that's going to really add up to hundreds and hundreds of pit bulls that are... I guess that's funny to you. Hundreds and hundreds of animals being...
Ladies and gentlemen, we did put ourselves out to take comment from each and every one of you, and at this point, I'm going to ask that there be, that silence be maintained to allow the council to have its deliberation, if you please.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, I am doing research. I wish the Humane Society was here. I wish we had some more experts. I think we're sort of talking past one another. You know, the research that I've read says there's something like four to four and a half million dog bites in this country a year. Couple of the speakers joked about being bitten by a cat and all that, but remember at the very top of the meeting, I said, "We're not talking about incidents, period. We're talking about severe attacks, about the severity of the danger, really." Not even aggression particularly, but the severity of the injury. I mean, I suppose all dogs bite, but it does seem to me, when you look at the data, that in a very disproportionate number, when pit bulls bite, it's more severe. Now, there is research that says there are some reasons for that. And again, I'm not endorsing the research, I'm just telling you what I have read. What that research says is that pit bulls have been bred to fight and to kill. And I think one of the speakers talked about a ring of 50 pit bulls that were in a fighting ring. And that, again, is my understanding that when there are dog fighting sort of operations, which are horribly illegal and cruel, that they tend to be this breed. I read research that said that their jaws are extremely strong. That their jaws are extremely strong? They're not? Okay. So, yeah, we're not talking about German shepherds, we're talking about pit bulls. And are their jaws really, really strong? And do they actually bite using the strength of their jaws in a way that is different? There is research that says yes. Yeah, listen, listen. You listen with your ears. And that they bite and they grab and they hold on and they shake and they don't let go. So, the data says there are about 4% of the dog population in our country. And so, you turn and you look, okay, the severe attacks. Well, there's not a lot of data on severe attacks, but there is a lot of data, very specific data, on fatal attacks. So, 4%, if, as everyone says, "I'm wrong, I'm wrong, I'm wrong, I'm lying, I'm lying, I'm lying," then 4% of the fatalities would be pit bulls. In California, last year, there were five fatal dog attacks. First one was a woman named Elsie Grace in Hemet. She was 91. In February of last year, she was killed by pit bulls. Then, in April, Claudia Gallardo in Stockton was killed by pit bulls. Then, in May of 2013, right here in LA County, up in the northeast part of the county, Pamela Devitt, who was 63, was killed by four pit bulls. And then, up in the Bay Area, in Union City, in June, a six-year-old boy named Nefi Salu was killed by the family pit bull. And the family said it was like his best friend turned on him and just wouldn't let go. And then, in September, a two-year-old out in Colton named Samuel Zimudio was killed by four or five pit bulls that his family owned. So, I mean, any right-thinking person would, especially when you sit in our seat and you say, "We've got an obligation to protect the community." Why are 4% of the dog population responsible for these kinds of fatal and severe attacks? I mean, clearly, there's something that should be examined, at least. I mean, I'm really disappointed that the Humane Society isn't here. And I read the noteworthy's, you know, and I see that we have incidents involving dogs, and often, they are this pit bull breed. And so, I come here, there's no, trust me, there's no political mileage to be gained from this issue. I mean, just look. Look at, look at the folks. And it seems like a lot of them are talking about the personality of the dog, or if properly cared for, the dogs can be wonderful pets. I grant you all of that. I'm just saying, if you look at the data, there is both physical evidence and numeric evidence to suggest that a right-thinking person in our position would have to take this issue on and figure out why, at least why. Yeah. Pardon me? Did you say I'm wrong? Did pit bulls kill Samuel Zimudio, the two-year-old? No, no, answer my question. Did pit bulls kill Samuel Zimudio? Do you know about any of these cases?
I can answer. We should probably keep the discussion within...
Well, let's talk after the meeting. I'll be happy to meet with the folks, and I want to hear about these cases, because I'll tell you, I didn't just rely on dog bite. I went and looked at the coverage of the cases and the pictures of the, the pictures of the dogs and their pit bulls. So...
Ladies and gentlemen, we're reserving this time for deliberations within the council.
Now, if the answer is to do, if the answer is to do all breeds, fair enough. But I'm not particularly concerned that, you know, one of my Malte Poos is going to kill somebody. They might bite somebody or nip somebody, but if that's what the legislation should say, and a number of the people said, "Oh, you're going to take away my dog or kill my dog," that's not what a spay and neuter ordinance would do. There is research that says that 92% of the dogs involved in fatal attacks are males, and that of those, 94% are not neutered males. So, clearly, there would be some basis, if that data, again, I'm not endorsing it, I'm just reporting what I've read. If that data is accurate, that would suggest that a spay and neuter ordinance could have a positive effect, perhaps. So, that's the reason for this lengthy hearing from where I sit, and I leave it to my colleagues as to how they want to proceed.
We have a motion pending, which would continue the particular proposal that was on the agenda tonight until the first meeting of this council in July, on July...
14.
14, at 7:00 PM. That motion is pending.
Mayor, I continue to believe that the council and the community would be best served to have a full and complete report, including a report from the Humane Society regarding euthanasia, and a full and complete report regarding not just breed-specific legislation, but mandatory spaying across the board. And so, that was my motion a few hours ago. And I would call the question. And I might add that a majority of the speakers, at least as I listened, seemed to indicate that while they didn't support breed-specific legislation, I'm not going to go as far as to say they support mandatory spay and neuter, but there seemed to be an indication, at least from my vantage point, that they believe it's the proper thing to do to consider, instead of BSL, consider mandatory spay and neuter across the board.
Well, when the Humane Society was here, when we discussed mandatory spay and neuter, they were in support of it for across the board.
Mr. Kennedy?
I, for one, would invite my colleagues to vote no on the motion, as I am, and that we deal with the ordinance itself tonight. The reason for that is, you know, there are about 100-plus folks who have arrived tonight to talk on this issue, to share their intellectual and personal hands-on experience about this issue. And from the vantage point of our colleagues, who, my colleagues who have already spoken, there seems no appetite for breed-specific legislation. However, there seems to be more consideration as it relates to all breeds, and as it relates to the only attack that I know of on a police officer in the city of Pasadena, who I worked with when I worked for the Pasadena Police Department, was by a German shepherd, a German shepherd police dog. And most German shepherds, as I remember when I was involved in police work, are taught to bite and hold the suspect as opposed to rip the skin. But one of our officers, out of respect, will not name him, was ripped from the hand all the way up the arm, and he's still on the Pasadena Police Department. It took some time for him to heal. My point, anecdotally, but empirically, it seems to be supported as well, as I've said previously, that the dog owner is in large measure responsible for the conduct of the dog, how that dog is trained, how you treat that animal. And this breed-specific proposed ordinance is not a solution for the problems that my colleague, at least one of my colleagues, genuinely and appropriately has brought to our attention, and he needs to be respected for bringing it to our attention. And healthy debate has taken place, but I don't think tabling it, having heard all of the speakers and really listened to my colleagues, is the best way to approach this. So, I'm going to vote no on the motion and hope that we can deal with the fundamental issue of breed-specific legislation tonight.
Mr. Tornick.
Thank you, Mayor. I share John's feelings on this. I think that the proposal is well-intentioned, clearly, but it's, but the necessity for this ordinance has not been established, in my mind. I think the facts, I think we can say, are in dispute, if nothing else. And those of us that have waded through the information that people have been kind enough to provide, I mean, I think it's been very illuminating, and I think some of it was fascinating. I'm not able to reach any definitive conclusion about this, one way or another, but I am persuaded, frankly, by the list of organizations objecting to breed-specific legislation, which we've been provided with, which include the American Bar Association, the AKC, the ASPCA, the American Veterinary Medical Association, and the California Veterinary Medical Association, and the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, as well as the Justice Department. And I think that the most important thing to me is that there's been no, that the benefit of this proposal hasn't been established. There is no evidence that this kind of breed-specific legislation will reduce the number of dog bites. There is no evidence that enforceability can really be achieved. And I think the reason that we've had this big outpouring of opposition is because when you start to deal with people's pets, you're really sort of reaching into their families. And I think that before government makes a move like that and runs the risk of overreaching, that we'd be very clear, we need to be very clear on the benefits, we need to be very clear on the science, and we need to be very clear on the enforceability. This council hasn't shied away from being aggressive in terms of, and, you know, fearing overreaching. We've adopted smoking ordinances in multifamily housing, but the science there was solid and the impacts were undeniable. And we did a plastic bag prohibition. And there, again, I thought at least, I was convinced that the science was undeniable and the impact would be predictable and achievable and beneficial. So, I'm persuaded that we do need to take action. And I think that the action that we should take should be investing city resources in educating the public and in investing in some method of making low-cost or no-cost neutering available to people who can't afford it. Because I think one of the great deterrents, apart from not educating people about neutering, is that they really can't afford it. And the notion of criminalizing low-income families, I think, is a huge mistake. But that's a discussion for when we have the mandatory neutering discussion in July or whenever it is. But I would urge the council to listen to what they've heard tonight, to absorb the information that we've been provided with, to reject the motion to table, and to vote on the substance of the proposal tonight.
Ms. McAllister.
Thank you. The question I have is that when I initially made the suggestion that we table this and we go back to our prior proposal of mandatory spay and neuter across the board, the discussion subsequently led to the fact that we should continue the hearing, which I think is the motion on the floor. And the request to continue it was so that the people that were here, the public, could come back at that next meeting and be heard. But in the interim, everyone has been heard. I think when we had that discussion, we were talking about not hearing from the public, basically continuing the matter until another night, and then everyone would have to come back. Then, we subsequently decided we want to make sure everyone who took the time to come out here today, tonight, was heard, and they've been heard. So, the way I see it, then there's no need to continue the item because the purpose for the, there's no longer a purpose for continuation. We might as well just act on it.
Yeah, so the motion's actually not to continue, it should just table? And, no, let me finish. And what that can mean is it can mean it could come back or it couldn't come back. So, just to clarify that. The other things I wanted to say, Mayor, are nobody was talking about criminalizing. Terry was, used that word, but to my knowledge, we haven't been talking about any criminal sanctions here, we're just talking about public policy. I did want to mention, though, that reminded me, and this goes to John's comments, that, because a number of the people that wrote in, you know, talked about you have to deal with the owners, you have to hold the owners responsible. In three of the five fatal attacks in California last year, there are criminal prosecutions underway. So, the authorities come in and they're charging the owners of the pit bulls with manslaughter, some sort of homicide, or endangerment of children, in the case of the two kids, or the one child, rather, the two-year-old. The other thing is, I'd just like to know for the record, how many of the, were there 67, 68 speakers?
Tonight, there were 55 speakers, and of those 55, there were 18 residents of Pasadena.
Thank you very much.
That completes the deliberations on the motion that is pending. Mr. Jomsky, will you take a roll call vote?
Well, Mr. Jomsky, will you clarify the motion in light of the discussion about tabling and continuing?
Sure. The motion was to table the first reading to July 14, 2014, and direct staff to come back with options for breed-specific legislation, all breeds, mandatory spay and neuter, and if there were any other options, it wasn't clear, there was a third element to that.
Well, and a report... Well, and a report on euthanasia in general, and...
A report from Pasadena Humane Society on euthanasia.
And any suggestions they might have to reduce the kill rate at the Humane Society above and beyond mandatory spay and neuter.
Councilmember Gordo?
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy?
No.
Councilmember Madison?
Yes.
Councilmember Masuda?
No.
Councilmember McAusten?
Yes.
Councilmember Tornick?
No.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Bogard?
Yes.
The motion passes, five in favor, three against.